Great. Well, guys, thanks for taking the time. So where we are, you know, we submitted all the plans. And thanks for your help on that as part of the subcommittee work. I think. We submitted a full package to the board on Friday. And you guys might remember, but at the last meeting, Dave Hatfield also wanted us to kind of start going through the Tarrant Lane decision. To look, because I had given a list of conditions and remember the chair said, you know, he said he had been through the Tarrant Lane decision. He thought there'd be some appropriate things in there that would apply to this project and he kind of wanted us to sort through that. So I've kind of taken a liberty to do that and I'm gonna share the screen. Hang on a second. Raising my hand, not sharing the screen. Okay, can you guys see that?
Yeah, and I've got it up on my computer too. I got the same one.
Okay, so I don't think this will take too long, but I did want to go through this and it's really not, it's, it looks more ominous than it is. A lot of it is standard stuff that we will, you know, we'll deal with as part of a decision goes. So. I'm gonna kind of, you know, the procedural stuff, that's, you know, obviously that would be into any decision that you guys rendered. So I'm not gonna go through that. Just all, all the approved plans, Jim, right?
Yeah.
Are used to in decision, architecturals. This one probably had a lot more than us.
Certainly did.
Yeah, landscaping plans, okay. Okay, this just deals with all the memorandums and, and any decision that was filed on this project would also have all this stuff. Peer review. Project changes, that this project has changed and reduced significantly units, just like there was reduction in that one. And then, am I going too fast on these things, guys, with my scroll? Can you see it? Again, and then findings eligibility in the site approval letter. This is just all standard stuff for, for a 40B decision. So. Affordable units, that would obviously be a big part of this. The rubber's gonna hit the road in a minute. Landscaping. Okay. The waivers, I'm putting together an updated waiver list. The board if wanted that, so I'm working on that. So I'm gonna kind of scroll through that. Well, it's interesting, the waivers are very similar to Tarrant Lane. All these 40Bs have similar waivers. So was our conditions. Conditions, okay. All right. So affordability requirement. This is basically gonna be verbatim. It's 25%. So we will. Deal with that.
You wanna, uh, Brian, you wanna blow that up for everybody a little bit?
Yep.
Down low, right hand corner.
That better, Jim?
Yeah, I've got mine up, but I, I'm just barely able to read it on yours, but that's all right.
Is that better, Amy?
Yeah, that's perfect.
Okay, good. So obviously any 40Bs can have a regulatory agreement. This project can have 25% of the units as affordable. The, uh, would be 18% if it was a, if it was a special permit project. So if this project goes forward, it's a 25% affordability. Which is standard. The good part of this is, is that the, is, um, if this is approved, the town will get, um, credit for 100% of those units. Because it's a rental project. So all, all of the units will count for the town's subsidized housing inventory list. So this language will basically be verbatim. Annual monitoring, that's gonna be verbatim too, that the applicant is required to file a report with a monitoring agent on compliance with the regulatory agreement. This is gonna be the, uh, median income of 80%. Which is.
On the monitoring agent, wasn't, uh, we ran into some difficulties on another project, basically where they didn't have their rack together, basically?
I don't know.
On who the agent is?
Don't know. I haven't, you know, this is, this is, I haven't done a 40B in Wakefield, um, in some time.
Okay, yeah.
What project was that, Jim? Was that, uh? Kemworthies in Greenwood?
No, it was a project that was, uh. It was a project that was completed, basically, by the time they got all the stuff done. I forget, I'll think, when I remember it, I'll, I'll voice it.
Okay, yeah. And this is, this is where there's gonna be a breakdown on the units. So we'll do, we're gonna do it proportionally, like, you know, we've got one, twos and threes, so we'll have 25% of each, each flavor.
Yeah, and that's all broken down on Peter, Peter's stuff as far as the number of.
That's right.
Number of, um, units, basically, in bedrooms.
And then this is, this is language, I kind of do it a different way. I always have that paragraph that talks, you know, lays out 25%, 50%. It's just basically, this paragraph is in there to make sure that, uh, the owner doesn't get ahead and not build the affordable units like happened at Heron Pond.
Ask about that, okay.
So well, I already had that in my conditions, but they just kind of did it a different way. So this is, this just says that, uh, you know, a lot of the stuff that they put in here is, you know, I don't know why they do it, but, you know, we'll put it in. I think it's gonna make the chair comfortable, um, to have language like this in decision. Basically says you have to comply with affirmative fair housing in your marketing of the project. Which you have to do anyways under, under state and federal law, but, but we can, we can put that in there. I think, let me just. Local preference, which you, you, you will want, um, if this project moves ahead, local preference requirement, 70% for Wakefield residents.
And Brian, what happens if, and I'm sure this is probably a complete hypothetical, but what happens if that many people from Wakefield didn't apply?
Then it will go to the next, Amy.
Okay. So it's only the people that do apply 70% of, if they are in Wakefield.
Yeah, yeah. So let's say there's, you know, there's, let's say there's, um. Yeah, say if you have, if you have 10 affordable units, um, you know, that, you know, basically if there's set, if there's, if there's seven qualified people from Wakefield, they will get them.
Okay.
No amendments, okay? That's why we're working hard for our, on our plans, provisions of, um. Yeah, DHCD, Department of Housing Committee Development, has to approve, um, the, um, the units, that's a requirement. Okay. Okay, final approved, approval, so, um, if a comprehensive permit is issued, then you have to get your final approval by mass housing. So that's just putting it as a condition, because it's gonna have to go back to mass housing for final approval. Have to submit. Um, copy of the decision. I mean, you know, this is all pretty, this stuff happens all the time anyway, so I, you know, I don't, you know, I think, I don't know why they put a lot of this stuff in there, but we can put it in, it doesn't hurt.
Well, I, I think it's, it's more highlighting it basically, because it's in the documents that, that you gotta prove basically here, so I can understand why it's there.
This is, um, you know, but again, you know, I mean, some of the stuff, to be honest with you, I saw in this decision, kind of went contradictory to what the board is doing. So like, you know, your board is, has said that if things are requirements and like, you know, laws that, you know, we don't want them as conditions, because people have to comply with them anyways. So like this one says that we have to comply with the town of Wakefield, um, noise bylaw. We have to, you know, so, you know, I mean, you got, what, how do you feel about that, Amy? Do you feel we need to put this in there?
I, I think we just put it in for Tarrant Lane, just to make sure it was like belt and suspenders that we have, even though it's, you know, required and, um, just to see, because I mean, even if you take an instance like, um, on Albion there, where they would jack hammering at night, you know? There was no notice of it. So I think it's just there as type of, you know, this is what the guidelines are, so we can see it clear as day.
Yeah, okay. And this one, this one's interesting. Um, I'm gonna let you guys read 11 instead of me, you know, I think you should read this one, because it's kind of interesting.
It's kind of similar to, um, what's the initials I'm thinking of? When the town builds something, the state requires them to hire, um, what's it called? The seat. I can't think of the initials.
Yeah, oh god.
Like a CR, CRM.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I have no problem with this. I actually think, um, Steve, are you there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see an issue with this. I actually think it kind of helps you, because it puts everybody on the same page of exactly what you're gonna be doing.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's fine. I mean, we're gonna be doing that anyway, so it's just, it's about.
Well, you got a few, you got a couple of things on there, Brian, like where you fuel the equipment, that could change at any time, depending on the job.
Yeah.
You know, where you are.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know what you're saying, Joe, yeah. I mean, you know, that can be dealt with, but I think, I think it's good that, that town officials know how you're gonna handle some of this stuff, so it's all about communication.
It's good to address it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it is good. So I, 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 you know, this is one thing I thought was positive, uh, well, I think a lot's positive. I thought this was really good. Do you agree, Jim?
Yeah, well, it, you know, this is gonna come up anyway, so you might as well address it upfront and not address it later when it becomes an issue.
That's right.
Like Jack would go out to some places, basically, because neighborhoods are complaining or someone's complaining. At least, um, you had this off ahead of time.
Yeah, and it really gives it to the building inspector. I mean, you know, I know Benny, and Benny will talk to both chiefs and make sure they're on board and, you know, so I think it's, I think it's good. Okay, so that's a good pickup.
We have a pre-job conference with the building inspector anyway, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's coming up, that's coming up, Joe. Um. Names and addresses, you know, I mean, that's all good stuff. Doesn't hurt to have that on record. Pre-demolition meeting, Joe, this is what you were talking about.
That is where you need the water.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is the final construction plans, Jim?
Yeah. I don't see anything in there, though, for. The, uh, sign-off.
Yeah, I, I didn't like this. I, I thought that, you know, I thought the language that you guys usually put in the decisions are better, because, you know, what, I mean, you know, if the project gets to this point, I mean, if, you know, if the project's approved and you go into building permit, you know, at that point, everybody's working on the same page to make sure that the project's built properly. Right?
Yeah.
And complies with the plans, and, and so to have a provision in there that if there's no rip response, um, by the building inspector or the board, within 30 days, the plans are, uh, are deemed approved. I think that's kind of harsh.
Yeah.
You know, because things happen, you know, it's like, you know, and, and, and we don't, if, if plans aren't what we're supposed to be building, we don't want them approved, because it's just gonna be a problem later.
Right.
It's kind, I mean, it's kind of contradictory that the decision says you have to build according to the approved plans, but then you have a provision that says if the plans aren't approved after the fact, within 30 days, you can build what is on those plans. That might not be consistent with what the board approves.
Absolutely.
Scratch that line out.
I just think, you know, we, we.
Well, I think you need to put something in where in fact, like we, like I know, or like I've normally done, basically, I get called in by Benny to, to confirm that in fact, they need compliance with the zoning, zoning approval.
I think the language that we use.
You need to insert that.
In the regular decisions, Jim, is probably better.
Yeah.
And what that is, Amy, is, is that we, we have to submit plans for building permit consistent with our approved plans, and a board member goes down and signs off prior to the building permit.
Okay.
I mean, since Jim's been doing that, we've, you know, we've never had a problem. Before that happened, there used to be, you know, nightmares of buildings half-built and, uh, you know, and, and a board member goes by and says, what are they doing? They're not building what they were supposed to. So I think we'll, you know, I, I would recommend that that get tweaked a little bit.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Okay. Uh, stormwater pollution plan is fine. I mean, that's standard, that's something that Bill Renault wants, town engineer. Uh, the NIPD's permit is, um, you know. This is where, you know, that's a federal permit that's required by federal law, so I mean, we can put it in there, but I kind of don't see a need for it. We have to do that under federal law, so, you know.
Again, it's belt and suspenders.
We can, yeah, okay. Um, I'll let you guys read 17. I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah, because the whole area is gonna be fenced off anyway, I assume, right?
Yep.
Well, the trouble, the problem, the problem is that this, the site, the building's taken up most of the site, so stock, it's like building in Boston, basically. You need to have the materials on there like just in time, because you don't have a whole lot of room here. In fact, whatever room you do have, it's probably gonna have either crane or some other hoisting equipment or something like that. So you can't, you don't have, until you get actually the foundations in, and the, and the garage level, you don't have much room to, to push stuff around or even stack it, basically, so. The first part of it's really tough, and there'll probably be a request, probably to take some of the street, certainly the sidewalk and the curbing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's not gonna interfere with the neighbors.
Um. It's gonna be tough on the first guy. Uphill.
Yeah, I mean, there's only one way in and one way out, so we gotta just make sure that that's top priority, that when people have to get out and go to work, or God forbid, there's an emergency, that.
Yeah, but we wouldn't be on Crescent Hill.
Okay.
We, we would not be on Crescent Hill.
Okay.
The fence would go all the way around the property land. We will be entering at Crescent Street, the bottom right.
Okay, where that driveway is.
The only spot we have for a trailer at a certain time is that back right-hand corner next to the neighbor's garage. Or 44 Crescent Hill will be a trailer up on the driveway.
So Joe, you're not gonna use Crescent Hill for any access during construction?
No, no.
So maybe we should put that in here, Amy?
Put that in there, yeah.
Is that okay, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, but again, if you have some, a delivery of, uh, beams that the crane has to, you know, or put them on, would we get that from the front street, Crescent Street? Whatever, whatever it comes up, we'd have to notify the town and then go from there.
See, I think, I think, um, one of the things you're gonna be looking for potentially would be, if you got the garage levels constructed, is that you'll be able to use a garage levels, basically, to park, um, uh, workers, basically, in there. And, and the like, so, you know, if you, if you take the entry off Crescent Hill to the garage, you're restricting yourself.
Well, I'm saying not to do it. If something comes up, I would rather.
I know, you're saying not to do it. I'm saying, I'm saying, you're, you know, you're, those guys, depending on how you're providing parking, are gonna park somewhere in the neighborhood, if you're providing.
They're better off to be able to get in from Crescent Hill to get in the garage, to get off the street.
Right.
That's one thing to be of the drive up the street to turn into the parking lot. I'm just talking about having cranes and stuff parked out there, you know, in this, in the road, and people can't get by and trucks backing up.
We won't do anything to block traffic.
Now, they'll, they'll end up, they'll end up on Crescent Hill only because it gives them the biggest swing across the whole site. They can hit every corner of that. Um, otherwise, they're reaching over the whole length of the building.
In parking spot 70.
Yeah.
That's where it will be. And then the parking will be the municipal lot behind the, uh, fire station.
And then is there somewhere, Brian, we can add in something about, um, a way to keep neighbors abreast of happenings? I don't know if that would belong in here, or if that, where that could happen, but some type of way that they'll get notified, you know, where gonna be, whatever, yeah.
Table that, uh, table that for a minute, because let's see, it might be something coming up.
Okay.
I don't think so, but let's just table it, notify.
Okay.
I just made a note.
I thought we talked about a website, that they go on a website.
Yeah, so let's just table that. I just made a note, we'll come back.
Okay.
You know, all this stuff is. Pretty, pretty. Pretty fine. I mean, some of it, my good friend Tevrig, not, I think they were kind of repetitive. I mean, now we got final architectural plans, we've already talked about that. You know, on final, and I don't know what the difference is between final construction plans and final architectural plans. Do you, Jim?
Um. Well, they transpose themselves. I mean, it's, the, what we're looking for is permit plans.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll play, I mean, I think we get the point and will, but I'm probably getting it when I draft, be a little bit more consolidated than they are. Meaning, I think that this final architectural plan can be dealt with up here on the final plan submitted to the building inspector.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's permit plan, so like, this is saying, final construction plan shall include construction level architectural plans. Well, those are permit plans. You know, it's just a long way of saying permit plans.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. It's kind of, it's a, so, but if I'm reading this, if I'm reading this, I'm saying, what's the difference between I've gotta submit final construction plans with the issuance of the per, uh, building, uh, permit? Okay, um, engineering, architectural, land, all the stuff that you normally get, and then I get another requirement down here. Final architectural, final construction plan shall include final, um, level architectural plans.
Yeah, well, it, it needs to be made clear between those two, or at least eliminating one and, and upgrading the other.
You got it, exactly.
That they, that there aren't gonna be any issue of permits until the, the zoning board signs off on them.
Understood.
On the construction drawings.
Got it. Yeah, I got, I got it. So Joe, um, are we, have we committed to any signage, anything? I mean, you're, you're showing something on the building, Joe and Steve, what's the story?
We're showing it. We talked about that with, um, Peter, uh, the material that I was thinking of, and then he was gonna present something, uh, on the sign, Crescent Commons.
So maybe we should get some detail on that, Jim, and, and take care of it now.
When you say sign, what do you mean?
Well, there's, I think Peter on his architectural elevation.
He did show a, he did show a sign on the building, yes.
That's right.
Yeah, it's a laser cut sign, yeah.
But he really didn't provide any detail of it, Jim.
No.
I don't think we put the material yet.
Yeah, so Steve, get him on that, because that, you know, we should, we should nail that.
Yeah, I was at his office the other day, we talked about it.
Okay.
And Jim, I was thinking this, Jim, the sandblast, you know, when you sandblast it in like a two-inch piece of, uh, whatever the material is, it's lightweight.
Not sure.
But anyways, he understood it. He was gonna present something for it.
Okay. The other thing was what sort of signage you might have up on the site fence?
Well, usually contractors like to put this on, but I don't know.
Yeah. It becomes like a circus, yeah.
Yeah.
We put the fence up and we put the black cloth, you know, the net, the net.
Yeah.
Jim, did Peter's last rendition that we submitted have lighting on it?
Um, he has lighting, he has lighting cuts.
Yeah.
In his package.
Okay. All right. So this project, Amy, you, you worked on this. Is there no HVA equipment on top of the roofs up at Tarrant Lane?
Yes, there is, and they're small units on the left side, on the top of the fourth floor, or, or third floor, whatever it is. And then the other side is an open deck.
So we don't real, I mean, we've already shown where ours are going, so we really don't need a pack, because I think we have them on the plans, right?
But Jim, let me ask you a question, if I may.
Yeah.
I mean, would, would it matter if some of them end up on the very top roof? I mean, we're putting 30, you know.
Oh no, they're going on the, no, this is a different project, Joe. Ours are going on.
No, no, I'm asking them on ours.
Yeah.
Forty condenses.
We don't wanna, what we don't wanna see, and we don't wanna see them, so I believe that what Peter has done at the location he currently has, basically, is there's like three or four feet, um, of curbing around there that's part of the roofing system.
The parapet, yeah.
Yeah, a parapet, so to speak. Um, if that same thing existed on the uppermost section, it would not be a problem. It's all about.
I understand. Yeah.
Yeah, Peter's plans has it along, like, along that Crescent Hill side.
He already, he already showed that they're not gonna be.
Yeah, right.
I suspect, basically, that's too, in some cases, that may be too long a run for the, for the lead-out, for the, for the cooling and heating systems.
For the line sets.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I said some on the top might want to be on the top. Above it.
Yeah, it's possible. You may not know that until you get HVAC guy on. But I suspect, I suspect that will happen.
Well, they can do, you can do longer runs. That's not, that's not a problem.
Okay.
Sprinkle in irrigation, yeah.
Yeah, well, tree allowance, so Jim, my notes, tree trees, we talked about if we can, if we can do them.
Um, it'd be nice to get three threes, but I, I'm, I have a feeling you only get two.
Unless we remove that sick one.
Yeah, well, that was, that was to go, yeah.
So want me to say up to three street trees, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, sprinkle, yeah.
Gonna, are they gonna open up the gas for this area?
No.
No.
So we're going all electric?
They're, yeah, they're, they're probably, you know, two years away from gas, because they're, they're waiting, not so much on the supply, because they got a new contract coming up sometime, where in fact, they'll buy more gas. And that will open things up.
The Revere, we're doing all mini splits, all electric, the whole place.
Yeah. The northeast has got a problem.
You gotta check all the boxes.
The public water connection, that was a specific issue for Tarrant Lane, you guys remember that? Um, they had, they didn't know where they were getting their water.
Yeah, yeah. Came over the bridge next to your mother.
That's right. So, Wakefield Fire Department conditions, you know, again, you know, we can put them in, but, you know, we've taken them out of the normal decisions. So we feel fire department conditions, you know, again, you know, we can put them in, but you know, we've taken them out of the normal decisions. So. I don't see a need for them.
No, I'd agree.
I mean, this is the stuff that drives, uh, Mr. Todd Bell crazy to have all this stuff in here.
You don't want to listen to him rant?
EPW conditions, so applicants contract right right of way, pay appropriate fees, including water tapping, I and I fees. Um, so I mean, that's all standard. I can work that out with Bill Renault. We've got some financial contributions too. Um, from TAC, they had a hundred and forty thousand on this project.
Yeah, the hundred and seventy units.
Yeah, bigger project, yeah. Little bit, little bit bigger, right, Joe?
Yeah.
It's all water, this is all water main stuff, right of way permits. Um. Environmental monitor, that's something Bill Renault, I'm I'm on J now, that's what he requires. As Bill plans.
It's all standard.
All standard, um. This is stuff that TAC had on this project that hadn't been resolved, uh, I think probably because it was on the Redding Line. So we don't really have this, but you know, one thing we do have is is the crosswalk. That's gonna be on our final plan. We'll be on the plan set.
But it's not even from our building. It's across the street.
That's right. Stormwater. I think I can, a lot of this stuff is, speaks itself. I don't think it hurts to put this in. I think it's gonna make the chair happy that you're, you know, any forty B is kind of consistent. And then, um.
Infrastructure security.
Yeah, I don't know what that's all about, but.
No, but we've, uh, we've already indicated what's happening.
About that, yeah. With the fog.
This is different, Jim. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna, the security thing, they didn't have, we'll, we'll have that all in ours, but this is infrastructure security, so it talks about gravel and binder course during construction.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I just got to that, yeah.
As built, changes and modifications, that's right, that's a state law.
Amy, you got your name in here.
Hey, Amy, you're, yeah.
Oh, there I am. To go down in history.
So I, I think this is a good paragraph, because it kind of documents how changes are gonna take place.
Well, it's certainly needed in some of the other projects, I'll tell you.
This is all the stuff that Dave, you know, the chair wanted, which is good for forty B. That's it. So I think most of this stuff is good and can be incorporated. We've got some tweaks, you know, we've got some additions, you know, our security plan and all that, and the commitment, you know, I, I think this, you know, I'd already presented a a draft list with a lot of those things on that were promised during the project that will have to be incorporated into this.
Yeah, Jim and Amy. I got the, uh, shingle sample with the actual, with the actual single. I think the one they turned over didn't have the, it just had a little swatch. Color. So I dropped that off in the morning.
That'd be great.
At the building department?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
So Joe, you have the full, full size shingle?
What?
What is it? A full size shingle?
Yeah, well, it's a full side, full, uh, display showing the actual shingle. Otherwise, they have a different color as the main shingle than the little swatches.
Well, I got it. So you get the actual color, Joe?
Yes.
Which one, the blue or the green? Or the gray, the green?
No, for the, for the blue. It's the gray, the blue.
Yeah, I think the.
It actually looks pretty good.
That green, I don't know, we'll see.
Well, you know something? The green didn't look that bad either.
No, they both look good.
Did.
So, Brian, I've got a Crescent Street working graph condition list, which I guess yours.
Yeah.
It, it was a two pager, three pager.
You want to bring it up, Jim?
I've got it, uh, but, um, this thing just has to go back and sort of meld in with everything else. And the other thing, I guess, is are we getting together to sort of, uh, outline the documents here? Like we normally do?
Yeah, so, you know, what what I'd like, what what I would respectfully request of the board, if if they like this design and they think we're moving forward, then, you know, we've looked at these conditions that, that I would work with you and Amy on a draft decision. That would include all the plans and everything.
All right, I don't have here everything particularly related to, uh, memos from departments, basically.
Oh, I've got that all. I'll put that, I'll have to put that all together.
Yeah, other than the fact that I, as I mentioned to you, I didn't see that. The.
Yeah, that's work that's usually done after the fact, Jim, and that's why I kind of want to do it. You know, because a lot of times, Joe and Steve, what happens sometimes is the board will close a hearing and they'll vote, and then they take, you know, they'll take like, you know, forty days to write the decision and issue it. And 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 with this project, I want to, I want, you know, if we're going forward, I want to, I want to work to get the decision written, so it's already done and they're voting on that decision and filing it the next day or or close thereafter.
But on this, on the list of drawings and the like in here, you probably said, should just eliminate all, if you're copying and pasting this. Is just eliminate all the drawings that are listed here from the previous job and just put in there basically to be, to be filled in. Architectural drawings, build in civil drawings, be filled in, whatever, all right?
Yep.
Because if you plant on each drawing this, at least in draft form, then unless you're gonna put that in there, you should just leave a space for it.
Brian, when we get to that point where we're gonna go over that, is it possible to maybe meet in person?
Yes.
Okay, I think it would be more beneficial if we can, you know, sit around a table and pass things around and do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If everyone's on board with that, I don't want anybody to be uncomfortable.
No, that's fine. I mean, I would probably, you know, come up, I would, you know, based on everything we're talking about now, I would do a draft and give it to you guys. So you can, so you you've had a chance, you know, a chance to look at it before, you know, just sitting down.
Yeah, we can make notes and then get together and kind of go over them. I think that's a good idea. That's what was helpful, I think, with Tarrant Lane, because every time we met, it was in person. Obviously, it was before COVID.
Is that how you did it with that one, Amy? Did you guys kind of write the decision before it was voted on? I think you did.
We did, yeah. Greg and I went, like, every, we've met a lot, every couple of weeks, I think, we were going, or at least once a month.
But you wrote, you wrote the decision, just like I'm suggesting, it was ba- basically done and the board.
Yeah, we did it all, yeah.
You voted on the decision.
Mm-hmm.
Versus you voted to approve and then wrote the decision afterwards.
Right.
So that's what I got. Well, oh, so I, I circling back, yeah, I think we can, we can put a provision in there on, on a website, Amy. There was nothing.
Okay, it may, maybe either, either hand out something to all the neighbors that shows them, this is the website, this is where all the updates are gonna be, you know, make sure you check it out every day.
We posted on the fence.
What's that?
Can we post it on the fence? You could just do a handout up, up, yeah.
Yeah, put something, yeah, maybe put a website on the, on the, on a sign, you know, on a banner on the fence.
Well, you can. You can do a Q and R code.
Yeah. But then tell all, I mean, there's only what, ten houses up there, if that, I mean, go to every door.
It's not a lot of houses and it's a tight neighborhood. All those people seem to be tied and commute with, you know, communicate with each other, so.
Right.
And then.
They've all been paying attention anyway, but I just to make them more aware.
It can get linked to the town website, too.
Yeah, Brian, I I have, I have the abuddhas list, so we can always do that, too.
Yes, yeah.
No.
That would be great.
Yeah.
We've been, we're using Q and R code of the, um, First Baptist Church, so the people can get to the website.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
All right.
And then even, I know with, um, um, the Hallmark Building, the, and I forget the girl's name, but the project manager, how she would, she basically lived there in the trailer. Um, but she had her contact info for the neighbors if they needed to reach out at any time. I mean, that's because they were doing blasting probably. But I don't know if that's something.
Yeah, we do that all the time.
Okay.
Yeah, our signs will be on that. Um, and and I'm, I'm, you know, my father and I are usually on the site a hundred percent of the time, so.
Perfect, okay. We just want it to be as smooth as, you know.
Yeah.
As it can go. Obviously, it's construction, it's not gonna be pretty, but the more people are aware of what's going on, and, you know, I think the less headaches that we'll all have.
Yeah. Jim, you saw the final prints, Jim and Amy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with them. They look good. I, I told Peter they were excellent.
Yeah.
I still have to get them.
He, he's, it's, he's done it similar to what we did on, on six ten, um, Salem Street, basically. Um, with all.
Different stone, though. Amy, Amy, they should be on your email. Email goes to you Friday.
Did I not see them?
Make sure you get the email from me.
Okay. On Friday?
Yeah.
Oh, yep, actually, I do. I haven't opened it yet, yep.
Wait, okay, cool.
Mm-hmm, yeah, thank you.
You should have three emails.
I got two right here.
I think Amy only had to have two, because your, your, uh, computer was the only one that bounced mine back. Jim.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so Amy, you probably got one email with the site plan and with the architectural, and then another email with the drainage.
Yeah.
Jim, there's a little more.
Yeah, I have three downloads, yeah.
Here it is. There's an updated, I think there's an updated one on this thing, too. Because there's a corner boards on the balconies.
So here's your.
Oh, there was.
Here's your colors, Amy. There's the.
Yep.
Blue.
They look good.
And then you got the green.
Mm-hmm.
What do you think?
I think I'm still leaning now towards the blue. I mean, I like the green, don't get me wrong, but I think it's funny, because I was all about the green.
I think the green is just too much green.
You know what I think throws it off, too, is the gray at the bottom of that.
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is a, this is a really classic.
A classic looking building.
The bottom is same gray, yeah.
Hmm, yeah, and that gray goes more with the blues than it does with the greens, the undertones.
Let's see how the rest of the boys feel.
See the color difference. Who are you kidding?
His owners, do we have any say?
You can say as much as you want.
You can't pick.
Yeah.
Just can't pick it.
Yep.
Well, you can make a recommendation.
What way are you guys leaning?
My wife's interior designer, so she keeps looking at it. She likes the blue.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, there you go.
What, what's that?
Did she like the green originally?
Yeah, she, no, she likes the green.
Yeah.
But she thinks of blue and grays, but like Jim said, there's a lot of blues and grays.
So, 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 so you can make a pitch for yourself and for your wife.
Oh, thank you. I use, I use her name, what the heck?
You, you can even, she can, she can be in the audience, basically, and put her ten cents in.
She's shy.
All right, we done here, Brian?
We're done.
Okay.
You can go have dinner.